All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. We'll start off with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April 19th. Every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, then I'll make a motion to pass the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda item 16.
So every member had a chance to receive the consent agenda, and if so, is there any discussion? If there's no...
I just have one question.
Councilmember Ballard.
I just, I was reading that, I just want to make sure that what the change was, was just the leasing company and the operator, that that was just the only change.
Which item?
Item seven.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Item seven, it's amending request for a letter of intent for the industrial revenue bonds. Mr. Manager?
Kathy Sexton is going to address it.
Yes, ma'am. If your question was the only change, yes, we, after you all approved the item, then we heard, oh, well, the actual name of the business is a little different, so that's the only change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a technical change. Further discussion on the consent agenda? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
More than bidding contracts and pushing my airport authority more than bidding contracts at April 25, 2022.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. There we go. The first item for engineering is the Swanson Park Bridge replacement for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $495,815.52. Award subject to your approval, 510-2022 of a new engineer's estimate budget authorization. Sanitary sewer main improvements, shoot Johnson addition phase two and three for McColl Excavation Incorporated, aggregate bid total of $1,354,028. 2022 OP3 CIP street repairs and sidewalks for Ron Barkley, DBA Barkley Construction in the amount of $792,000. Estelle Random North Neighborhood Water Main Replacement Phase B for McColl Excavation Incorporated in the amount of $326,645. For purchasing, we have laptops and hardware. Recommend to award TKK Electronics LLC in the amount of $473,520.83. Liquid chlorine bulk delivery for Brent Tag Southwest Incorporated for $1.472.0 per pound. Remodel of fifth and sixth floor for Police Department for Sky Contracting Company Incorporated for $174,200. For our airport, we have airport street side pavement rehabilitation. We're deferring to May 9, 2022. This is how to do business with the city of Wichita and to become registered. These are our current open requests for proposals, and the recommendation being approved, the bid boards as recommended.
All right, is there a question for staff?
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Could you go back to slide four real quick?
Sure.
On the OP3 sidewalk?
There we go.
So, how do we have two bids from Barkley, one being higher than the other?
That's a good question. I'd have to research and get back to you on that one, because I don't know if that's a typo or if that's a legitimate bid.
Okay.
I apologize. Is anybody who could?
Because the, the higher bid of 792 beats Conspec and PPJ. So now I'm really confused.
Well, and I don't know if there's anyone who can provide some information. Maybe they offered two different products or two different services. One was more extensive than the other, I'm not sure. Mr. Manager, do you have any insight for this?
Mayor, I don't, and I don't see any staff person with that program. If you, you know, I don't want to mess up.
Yeah, it looks like maybe just a typing error. But we can get that back and clarify.
Did we get the email from Jane?
Three typing errors?
I, I'd like to hold this. I would mention that we hold this bid and approve the others.
Yeah, and we'll get that information to you.
So motion is to...
Can you hold on just a second?
OP3 CIP. It should be, that first one should be $711,000. I apologize. And the Barkley should not have been down on the second one. So the bid is for Barkley Construction, $711,000.
So the typo is the 92?
Yes. I apologize.
Okay.
The Ron Barkley from this, the first one on there is correct, it did not get done on the first one.
Thank you, Melinda.
So then does the motion need to be to include the accepted bid for this to be 711?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Motion hasn't been seconded, so you can just, do we need a motion, or is this just a point of clarification?
Motion.
Motion to accept...
The low bid of Ron Barkley doing business with Barkley Construction for 711,000.
So, I guess we can make that part of the overarching motion, then? It's the, can you just keep that sign up, or that slide up, then? All right, so is there any more discussion on this? If not, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures with the understanding that Ron Bakely...
Barkley.
Barkley, DBA Barkley Construction's bid is approved at 700, you know, 711,000.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Maggie Ballard to attend the Tour Haven work of Thursday, April 28, 2022, San Antonio, Texas.
Councilmember Ballard?
I'd like to withdraw, I'm not going.
Is there any objection to withdrawing this item? See none, next item. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Mayor Brynne Wimmel to attend the Kansas Mayors Association, Friday, April 29, 2022, Kansas.
Any discussion? See none. I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the travel. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will not open her, all in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember, comments and comments?
Are there any appointments or comments at this time? Councilmember Ballard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint Mike Morlett to Animal Control.
Further appointments?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Tommy Benford to the Community Services Block Grant Committee representing the public sector, and reappoint Aaron Santory to the District One Advisory Board.
Further appointments? If there's no further appointments, I'll make a motion to accept those appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Back on, member comments, are there any comments or announcements for the good of the body?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ballard? Sorry, she had her hand up, we'll go to Ballard, then we'll go to Councilmember Johnson.
Sorry. I'd just like to remind and encourage everyone to go to Open Streets for No More this, this Sunday from noon to four. And go check out the new screen, the shade screens, they look fantastic.
Excellent. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Yesterday was the last Cedric County Task Force meeting. With that report coming today, I just wanted to ask Bob to work with Jim Jonas and Akeem over at Cedric County. They are creating a dashboard that will have updates from their work, from the recommendations, and ask that we mirror that work as well, to have a landing page. Also, if we could review those task force recommendations, I know we have begun, but I don't know if there was any tweaks from our conversation last night, and report back to the council what the budget would look like to implement, some of that, steps for implementation. And we had talked about a potential en banc sometime this summer to go over the recommendations and work going forward. Just wanted to ask that, and also thank you to Councilmember Frye and Hoheisel for joining us over with the county and working through getting some of this going.
Very good. Further discussion? See none, would that make a motion that we adjourn the meeting and go into our workshop? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. All in favor of said motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. We are now in our workshop. Chair recognizes manager Layton.
Mayor, thank you very much. The first item you have today is a discussion of a draft policy that has had some engagement already, and will be engaged after this council meeting as well. It's a tree policy to control our planting and even removal of trees on city-owned property, including rights of way and parkland. This, I believe this policy was originally requested by the park board, or discussed with the park board early on before the document was drafted, and they have been reviewing the policy along with others. So I'm going to turn this over to Troy Hauptman to kick off the item.
Thanks, Bob. I want to include the team. Mr. Gary Janz has been part of this, and Adam Nebazol has also been a huge part of leading this as well. His, his work has really been instrumental. His research has really been a big part of where we got to today. So, parks and recreation, we have a lot of things going on, there's a lot of things happening. But over the years, one of the things that's always been a concern is protection of our trees. And there's been a lot of different situations where that's popped up. Recently, it has more often than in the past, but we've always really valued our trees in our parks and in our public spaces, and we really wanted to make sure that we find a way to address a couple items, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in a second. But we are finding a situation where we're at a net loss in regards to our trees. We are at a situation where our trees are, are dying off because they're at the end of their life cycle, or they've died because of disease, and we haven't had a chance to replenish those trees and that canopy as we've had in the past. So a lot of these trees were planted 80 years ago, 70 years ago, and they've come to the end of their lifespan, and we haven't had a chance to put as many trees in the ground as we would like. So a lot of that comes from funding, a lot of that comes from other processes. But one of the things we can do is see if we can protect some of the trees that are currently in the ground and that are in good health. So, we wanted to come up with a policy to do that, and we wanted to come up with a policy that met these three goals. Here's the strongest goals that we really want to look at. Internally, if the city can do this as a policy, we would really like to see some of the other municipalities in the county, and the county kind of follow suit to help us with the canopy across this whole area. So, stronger reviews to avoid tree losses. Is there an opportunity that we can look at, a construction project or any other project that we're working on, in a way that we can see if there's a way that we can save some of the trees? And that's not always going to be possible, we know that. There's going to be situations where some trees just have to come out. And if that's the case, we want to make sure that we notify the public, that there's a process in our policy that lets us do that. And as we're going through plans with our, our construction folks and engineers, that there's a way that we can actually provide them. And then, if we are taking some trees out, is there a way that we can replace those lost trees? And there's a lot of different ways of doing that. Adam's going to share some things that we did some research on, and kind of looked at some ways of making that happen. So how do we get here? Well, we've gone through a lot of different public meetings, we've gone to MAPC twice, we've talked about this at the park board a couple times. Something that Chris Pompelli and I talked about, oh, probably late summer, in regards to protection of trees. And he had asked for a review and the comparisons of our city compared to other like cities. And of course, I wanted to use Austin as a reference, because I came from there. Adam used a, a city that he's familiar with, and so we put that in, in the mix. And Adam did a great job in regards to doing that research and doing the presentation. We also met with some folks in regards to subject matter experts, some folks from downtown Wichita, Schellenberger Development Company, K-State, WSU, our engineering department, MABCD, and a few other folks, staff-wise, that, that really kind of helped us out. Yesterday, we had a really good meeting yesterday with staff in regards to, how can this be implemented? What are the challenges that we need to look at in regards to internally, what are the procedures that we can do to make sure that this happens? We're still very much on the very cusp of doing research, there's a lot of things that we need to look at. Last week, I did get a visit from the Kansas, from Kansas Gas. They had really specific questions in regards to how this is going to impact them. I'm sure this is going to have some impact on water utilities, Evergy, some of our communication providers. A lot of this stuff is, a lot of these trees that are of issue are in right of ways, utility right of ways. And so, so those are some of the things we need to address as well. But we're getting started, and we wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of what we've gotten to so far, and we want to hear what kind of concerns that you guys might have, either via your constituents or from, from your firsthand knowledge of some of this work. So, I'm going to pass this on to Adam, he's going to really get into the nuts and bolts of this. Mr. Janz is also going to provide a little bit of information as well, so hopefully we can overwhelm you, or not overwhelm you, with a lot of information. Thanks.
Thanks, Troy. My name is Adam Nebazol, senior management fellow for the record. So yes, I'm going to go into kind of a dive of what the policy looked like without getting too much in the weeds. So, the first step that we look at is what is the application? As Troy kind of mentioned, this is an internal policy, so this policy will apply to city trees on city development and city right of ways. As we look towards the notification and the development, we kind of took what the current engineering timeline is when developing a project, and what you'll see here is the addition of a tree survey and a tree canopy plan into that. So what we see is, is that this policy follows normal engineering procedures, it just adds another layer in to show that the city is a good steward of the environment. So when development begins, at around the 10% design, Gary Jansen and the engineering team come to the district advisory boards and city council for the approval of the project concept. And then after that, in between the 10% and 80% plans, the, a tree survey will be developed as well as a tree canopy plan, which in the next few slides I'll get into much deeper. At the 80% plan, public engagement occurs again from the engineering department, and they go to the district advisory boards, they go to city council, they go to any other boards or commissions, and they post on forum to get feedback about the project that is being handled. And then finally, once the designs are in place and the construction begins, that's when an informal public engagement process continues during the building phase of the project. So as we look at the tree survey, in between the 10% plans and the 50% plans, the city arborist, a landscape architect, whether that's a consultant that is hired, or a city engineer consultant, will go out onto the land in which the project is occurring, and they will take down different information regarding the common or botanical name of the tree, what trees are going to be removed, or what trees are going to stay, what is the condition of each tree? Are we going to have to go back in 10 to 30 years to remove the tree because it's becoming more unhealthy? Is it a great young tree, is it going to be there for years to come? Just understanding what the current condition of that tree is. We look at growth, so if there's a lot of different type, if there's one type of tree in a large area, what is that, what is their current status? Is there any roots of where the trees are, trees that are off-site, but it's a big tree, so the roots can go deep into where the project site is? Do we need to note where those roots are? Because if you hurt the roots of a different tree, you could end up actually killing the tree over time and forcing it to be removed. The location and dimensions of the area of the landscaping perimeter, where are these trees going to be located, and where is the landscaping going to occur? The net buildable area, which I will get into a little bit later, but the net buildable area is, what are the areas where trees can actually be planted? What are the critical areas and the buffers? Where are the areas that maybe there are wetlands that you can't harm? Where are there other areas that can't be affected? Stormwater tracks, those are your ditches that can be on the side of a road, or they can be your sewer areas that you can't necessarily place a tree in for risk of damage, as well as the limits of the construction line, kind of where is the construction going to be occurring overall? Now, once that tree survey happens, a lot of that information will go into the canopy plan. So a lot of this background research will go in to the canopy plan that will show what trees are going to be planted over time. So, when this canopy plan is developed, right before going back at the 50 to 80% plant stage, a statement describing what trees will remain will exist, as well as what specific actions about how trees will be identified, marked, and protected before the start of during development. So exactly what is the city going to do to maintain those trees and ensure that they're not going to be hurt during construction? Next, the, excuse me, that a tree canopy plan will be drawn to scale of what the current area is, using the tree survey as a base, and then also containing the exact location and condition, as I mentioned, as well as the common name or botanical name, as well as what types of trees that are going to be planted. The caliper is technically the size of the diameter of the tree, as well as the site minimum density tree calculation. In the policy that you have, we give examples of exactly how that density is calculated and is laid out for anyone, especially engineering, to be able to utilize that and be able to figure out what, how many trees are going to be, need to be planted. As well as replacement trees, explaining what trees are going to be placed and where are they going to be placed. Identify any protective barriers, maybe there's going to be wiring around the tree to prevent animals from hurting the tree, or maybe they're going to be putting in stakes to help the tree stand up. As well as visual documentation. A lot of what we heard from the public is, and from our, our subject matter experts, is it's important to put visual documentation, so people know where exactly those trees are going to be placed. So as I mentioned, there is a 30 tree acre, tree units per acre requirement is what we're establishing. That 30 came from a median research of between all 11 cities that we studied, that we presented to the Parks Board, and to Advanced Plans Committee. 30 tree units per acre was the standard, or the median, of what was in between. Some cities had higher standards, some cities had lower standards. What we saw was that in 30 units per acre, a different sized tree can be worth a certain amount of units, so the larger the tree, the more units it's worth, because of how important it is towards shade and other uses in carbon sequestration, among other things. I believe table A in the document is, explains how many units are for a sized tree. If the number of existing trees is not enough on the site, then the site will have to plant a certain number of trees. Now, we all know that specific sites don't necessarily allow for that, the amount of trees required to be planted, and so it's really important to be able to have alternate sites to be able to plant those trees. And now I'm just going to hand it over, Gary, for a little bit, to just explain what a situation might be, where we have to plant trees in a different location, and what we plan on doing when a tree can't be located on that project site.
Thank you, Adam. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. I'm going to talk specifically about what you see on the screen now, which was on a project on West 13th Street. And there's a, kind of a side note to that I'll talk about, too, regarding our current policy, which obviously is not, doesn't go as far as this. And then I want to talk briefly about the meeting that Troy mentioned yesterday, that we had with staff and some of our engineers and landscape architects who started taking a look at this policy. So there's a lot under the ground within our public rights of way. This policy provides, looking at plantable space, if you will. So just to go through this real quick, this is a, again, on West 13th Street, out by the Cowskin Creek. Yellow being gas, green being sanitary sewer, red being power, and then the orange in there, where you see the marker, is communication. So this is not unlike what we see in a lot of public rights of way. Per franchise agreements, these utilities have the right to be in the right of way. We try to work with them during our design and project development process to make sure everybody can coexist and be within that right of way, but that design comes a little bit later during the process, so I'll come back to that in just a minute, it's something that we're going to have to look into farther. But what happens here on a project like this, when the proposed process is applied, we're probably going to struggle to be able to find enough room to apply that 30 credits per acre on this project. I think what we would foresee then is the project budget paying into a tree bank, if you will, where the park department could probably have an annual contractor, and they would be able to go plant trees based on those credits and the locations that they talked about. And I think from a process standpoint, that works well for us. Our staff and design engineers have started taking a look at this. We're not that far off from making this work already, enhancing some of our existing processes. Quick example on this project is adjacent Hickory Creek Estates, back to the, this way from us to the west, significant amount of trees adjacent to that development. We had pretty robust engagement with that neighborhood during numerous meetings, did everything we could during the design process to save trees. Now, we didn't have anything in there, which this, this process will do for a certain amount of replacement. We did plant trees on the project, but it wasn't measured as far as replacing one for one, or certainly not a, 30 credits per acre, so that's good, we can take that, the extra So that's good, we can take that the extra step, and I don't think it'll take us much to get there. But franchise utilities, Troy mentioned that he met with the gas company. Per their agreements, again, they have the right to be within the right of way. We're going to have to figure out how this works best. If their work, even whether, even if it's not associated with the project, if they're out working in the right of way and remove trees, I don't know that we've determined yet quite how that works, because they've got set franchise agreements right now that don't speak to that. So that's something we'll have to work with them on, look at future franchise agreements and see how that works. We're going to continue to work with those utilities during the design project process for these projects to make sure we minimize tree removal with them also. They do a lot of trenchless work, boring of their conduits and things, which helps, you know, limiting the amount of tree removal. Last thing I'll mention is, I know what we still need to spend some time on is try to figure out the types of projects where this applies, and if there are project types that may be exempt. We all want to be aware and not step completely away from this and say that trees aren't important, because they are. I think there could be project types that it's going to be a little bit challenging to apply the 30 credits for, per acre. We still want to be cognizant of trees are going to be removed, and make sure there's proper notification, and that's something that we've always wanted to do. I'll give you a quick example of, of something that staff's already asked about, is our condemned sidewalk program, our sidewalk repair program. Every year we've got a million dollars in the CIP, per city ordinance, sidewalk repairs responsibility adjacent property owners. Often we will run into issues with trees. Sometimes trees on public right of way cause some of the issues with the sidewalk. We meet with forestry, our city arborist, and see if the tree can be saved. If the tree needs to come out, that is done by the city. But because that program is a direct assessment back to the adjacent property owners, I think it'd be a challenge to try to apply this process to that. Certainly we wouldn't assess it to the property owners. I think on the utility side of things, the way our utility is funded, with our right structure, we're going to have to make sure we have a good understanding of the potential impact of budgets on those projects, because we don't know what that looks like yet. But those are the things I think we'll get to. So far, I think this is shaping out fairly well. We've got quite a bit more to do, but again, we had a good meeting yesterday, been working closely with Adam and Troy. This is just a good example of how the tree credits would apply and needing to go plant somewhere else.
Thanks Gary. And I think one thing that is important to note too, that a lot of people have been asking is, if those trees can't go there, where will they go? And Troy and Gary Ferris of forestry have been working on utilizing resources and data that we have, to be able to understand where are there gaps in our canopy? Where do trees need to be located the most? Public Works is currently working on a NASA study to identify high heat areas in our city, where those typically are areas with less trees. And so we hope to be able to utilize that data, and then over time be able to focus and prioritize maybe specific planting areas. And have on our city website, locations of this place is a priority, is our number one priority of planting those trees that can't go into that site. This is a number two priority, number three. We don't necessarily have that information now, but that is something we're going to look into to make sure that trees are being planted, the right trees being planted in the right location. So, current penalties, we felt should be stricter based on the importance of trees and how much they lead to climate resiliency and how important they are. Currently, the, if someone damages a tree without proper permitting, they can be fined upwards of not more than $200, and they can be imprisoned for 30 days. That's current, current statute. The penalties that we are proposing do not have that imprisonment for 30 days. But if someone damages a tree that requires it to either be removed because of the damage, or if they remove the tree itself on a city tree, it will be calculated based on the base value, which is what is the size of the tree, the cross sectional area, the species classification, the condition rating, and the location rating. Your appendixes A and B go into further detail on exactly how that is calculated, and gives full layout of how that is calculated. And then also, I think it's, in that document also gives an example of how the calculation goes. If the tree does not necessarily fit that value, we do are setting a minimum value standard at $200. So minimum that if you damage a tree that is forced to be removed, is at $200. Now, if someone does not have a permit and they alter a city tree in a right of way or on public property, but it doesn't require it to be removal, we are keeping that damage to, of a fine of not more than $200. As you can see, we do not, we are not proposing, we are proposing not to maintain the imprisonment for up to 30 days, but rather stricter monetary fines. Now, when we look at maintenance, planting, and removal best practices, we felt it was important to be accountable to ourselves, to be transparent, and to also promote best practices. So, the, what we are proposing here is to state the city processes, which this policy does lay out, in terms of maintenance, planting, and removal. So if a member of the public knows our current processes, if they see that we have a contractor or that a member of our own city is currently not doing those best practices and putting themselves or other members of the public at risk, then we want to be held accountable for that. We want to know when we go wrong. We want to promote best practices and be a well-run city. We also want to promote these best practices for people and the public who maybe hire their own arborists or work on their city. Is that arborist that they're hiring promoting the best practices? It's really important to know that if they're hiring someone to do work on their own trees, or if they want to do tree on, tree work themselves, they should know what the best practices are, so that they're not putting their own house, their own life at risk. Just to really emphasize this, we're not mandating any types of maintenance, planting, and removal. We want to put this on the city website to be able to promote it and do education campaigning around this, and kind of teach what best practices are. Finally, we want to install a heritage tree program. That is something, this is a program that is well-used throughout the United States and many other cities, where the city wants to promote trees that are older or historic or have a story to them. To receive this status, the tree must exceed in size what is commonly found in the area for the species in diameter, canopy spread, characteristics like that. Once a tree is listed as a heritage tree, it will require an administrative variance from the director of park recreation prior to removal, because of how important that tree is to the community. Applications will be, an applicant, application form is being developed as we speak, and they will be sent to the park and recreation director, who will review and bring those that are acceptable to the park board of commissioners. That board will then have the discretion to determine if a specified tree can be deemed a heritage tree. And then each heritage tree will be added to the city website for public access, so they can either go visit that tree location, they can learn maybe more about the history of that tree, if there is a history, as well as to show how, how many trees are in our city that are really important. So, as Troy mentioned, we have been going back and forth between some boards and commissions, and we've had this post up on forum since April 1st. We, from this most recent draft, we have been getting feedback from two boards. Advanced Plans, they, to go into a little detail of what they talked about, they wanted to understand and really make sure that we clarify what the language of trimming versus destruction of trees is. I think destruction was a word that was used before, and that was my own usage, and probably not the best verbatim at the time. So I think we're really emphasizing damage. They had concern on the impact of private development. We want to make sure that development isn't hindered in this situation. That's what Advanced Plans was concerned about, though we reemphasize that this is for city projects, not necessarily our private development. And we want to under, and they want to make sure that they understand the appeals process of fines. The appeals process that we have in our current policy is what is currently in the statute. So there is no change in the appeals process. What we heard from the board of park commissioners is that they found it was important not to bifurcate private and public property with this tree policy, they want to see it more holistic. And they wanted to include the tree, the requirement for special assessment projects to implement the tree policy. That is your TIFs, your Star Bonds, CIDs, projects like that. So basically, they were interested that if projects accept public funds and tax dollars, they should be held to that standard. When we look at feedbacks from stakeholders and forum, what, people have emphasized that we need the increased enforcement of current landscape policies. What we've heard is that we might be adding these new regulations or these new policies to ourselves, but there isn't currently enactment of our own current landscaping policies. We need to be able to enforce our own before we can even go out and start regulating the private sector. There's been a lot of desire for tree ordinance, people want to take that next step and mandate this for the whole city. And that the value of the trees, that the process that we have been, that we laid out in this policy is outdated and needs to be updated. According, there has been a new standard that has come out, ANZI version 10, I don't know if that's the exact name, but it has come out where it identifies the carbon reduction and things like that, that it goes into the wealth of a tree. And so we need to actually go back and look at that. A lot of the things that you see in this current policy will be included in that next step, but it goes farther and adds a little bit more rules between what is value of a tree. And to kind of go beyond that, the city, people have expressed that the city has a fiduciary duty in the national conversation regarding tree canopy, climate resiliency, those situations. One member of the public mentioned a three-strike policy, where if the contractor damages or damages a tree requiring to be removed up to three times, that they should no longer be allowed to participate and work for the city. And finally, the city, people have emphasized that we need to work with our utility companies to ensure that we're not going to be damaging gas lines, that we're not going to be damaging regional corridors, like our Evergy or Kansas Gas Service, situations like that. So what are our next steps? What do we hope to achieve from here? We will be speaking to the Sustainability Integration Board tomorrow, tomorrow evening at 4:30 here in the boardroom. We will be meeting with a group of neighborhood associations on, and I can quickly give that address to those that might be interested, at 1329 South Terrace Drive, which, in Wichita, the 67218 area code. We will also be recording a presentation for the district advisory boards today, and that will be given out to the district advisory boards, and we'll ask for their feedback coming up on May 2nd, May 4th, and May 9th. After that point, on May 9th, we will be closing the forum page for feedback, and we will begin to analyze and collect all the feedback that we've received from boards, commissions, the council, and then hopefully over the next month or two, to develop a final policy proposal to the city council. So that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any feedback. What questions, concerns? Are we going in the right direction? Things like that.
Well, I'll start. Is there, I like the idea of a tree bank, essentially where if you can't put the amount of trees, you could pretty much pay for those trees to go somewhere else. Have we thought about perhaps taking a page out of our, the policy that, or the ordinance that allows us to reimburse folks for water-efficient appliances? And maybe create something that will allow folks to get reimbursed for, for trees that they want to plant on their personal property? And maybe the funding from that tree bank might be able to backfill some of that, that effort as well.
So there's a couple of different ideas in regards to that. And one other thing I want to add in, another meeting, Adam doesn't know about this, but we're actually going to the bike pet board next week, so another meeting to add to the list. So, he doesn't know that, because we just decided to do that this morning. So, one of the things that we were looking at in short term, that we want to do this coming fall, getting ready for the planting season, we're going to set aside $5,000. And that $5,000 is going to purchase seedlings, and we want to hand that out to private citizens so they can plant those at their own houses. One of the things we're, I want to talk about a little bit briefly, is our canopy that the city is responsible for is roughly about 10% of the whole city, maybe a little bit more, 10 to 12%. The loss of the canopy is the whole area, which includes private residents, businesses, other industries that have property. So it's not just what the city maintains and operates, but it's across the whole city. And so there's got to be an effort to try to incorporate different processes, different initiatives to put canopy across the whole city. And this is one of those. And I like what you're talking about, because what we want to do this coming fall is hand out these seedlings. It's a really inexpensive way to get things started, to get some trees in the ground. And those roughly have about a 50 to 60% survival rate. We could do that much larger, and there could be also a rebate situation where if they're purchasing a larger caliber tree, and they can bring that back to the city, and from that tree fund, we can give them a reimbursement. But possibly that tree fund could also help us with handing out these seedlings and, you know, I, I think right now, the cost right now is roughly about $2.50 per seedling. We could get a whole bunch more in the ground, but that ends up, the onus falls on the homeowners to take care of that seedling. And there's a lot of pride in that, but there's also a little bit of risk in regards to the survival rate of those trees.
I could also just quickly add on that, when I was in my undergrad program, what we did around Earth Day was there always was a program where due to storms in the past, they replanted trees. And we can work with private partnerships such as Canopy ICT, they're wanting to teach people how to become volunteers and tree plant. And so, a pro then, that could be established, working alongside with that, is working with organizations like Canopy ICT to be able to lead volunteer groups. And then if homeowners want to sign up to have a tree planted, that they're, that they sign saying that they will maintain that tree, then we can emphasize that as an outgoing Earth Day-type project, or, and that would also help get private trees and people to get out and volunteer and do things like that. So that's another idea that we've had as well.
When I was in Austin, we worked with a group called Tree Folks, and from, we had a tree fund in Austin that came from Austin Energy, which was the utility company there. And with the funding, we would purchase 600 or 700 trees, and we would have a tree planting day in the late fall. And we would bring out mulch, and all the volunteers would come out, and they'd help us plant all these trees and actually put in some temporary irrigation system. So, the idea is to get as many trees in the ground, but also protect the trees that we do have.
All right, who wants to jump in? Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and for all the staff who put all the hard work in for the community input, I really appreciate it. I just, I have a couple of questions, and again, maybe you, I didn't, I missed it upon review, but, so talk a little bit, so let's say that someone removes a tree, right? So just kind of walk me through the process of who determines if a fine is given? I like the fact we took out the 30-day imprisonment, but I see in here that it says they could be responsible for the labor of replanting it, but that wasn't mentioned. And then my other question is the appeals process? It's not super clear to me in here who's responsible. It talks a little bit about the director of park and reg, but is it just one person? So if you could just explain to me if, if Councilmember Johnson takes out a city tree and shouldn't, what happens? Walk me through the process.
Do you want to handle that one? Can I fill it in? Okay. This is your typical process, so, okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Very well.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the heritage tree, or are you talking about just penalties for trees in our jurisdiction?
Yeah, just penalties for trees in our jurisdiction. Thank you. It's on page nine and 10 of the policy.
Slide 15, or?
Slide numbers are different, they took out a slide on their end, so, the...
The slide, it's on the policy nine and 10, page nine and 10.
Also, while you're...
That's what I was talking about.
Okay. While you're responding to this question, could you also talk about what is the cost of if someone knocks down a heritage tree? Is that just 200 bucks?
That's a good question.
But it, it seems driven to...
Yep, follow-up question, yeah.
So a couple of different things, I'm going to talk a little bit about two different paths. So first one is, if we have a construction project, or we have a project that's going on, and we have a contractor that actually removes a tree that they're not supposed to, that's going to be one of the situations where we'll go back and find out what the value of that tree is, and assess that penalty to them, okay? That's one of the situations. Another situation that's occurred several times in the past, and, and one that's really kind of unfortunate, we've had some wayward drivers that have taken out some of our trees. And through a police report, we were able to track these folks down, and with the help of the law department, we were able to actually assess a fine to them, so we can actually replace that tree. And obviously, that tree probably didn't go in the same spot. So, those, those are two processes that we probably should spend a little bit more time really putting into the policy, and as a solid process, so we can go from point A to point B and follow everything in between. So those are the two items that I wanted to explain to you. Does that cover your question?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
So tell me a little bit about the appeals process, too.
Okay. So there's a couple of different ways in regards to appeals, but if we're looking at a right-of-way tree, we've had some folks come and say they want this tree removed from in front of their house, or in front of their business. And we've asked them to write an appeal to the director. And so I'll have staff go out there and check out the tree, what's the condition of the tree, what's the situation. A lot of times it's because it's covering one of their signage, or maybe it's having an impact on the entryway into their business, it's dropping a lot of fruit or some tree, or some leaves. So we'll take a look at that and see, does that tree really need to be removed? And... removed? And, um, per the ordinance, uh, if it's healthy, it doesn't get removed. And so they ask for an appeal. And I've had a couple of appeals come through my office in which I have rejected their appeals because they're healthy trees. We've had a situation where they said, "Well, I'm really allergic to cottonwoods, and, um, that cottonwood is across the street. Um, uh, can you just cut it down?" And the situation, I'm, I'm telling them, "I'm really a sorry, but no." Um, so I'm going to uphold the ordinance and keep that tree there.
Thank you. And that's happened to me. That's one of the reasons I just wanted to clarify that that process is remaining the same, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Vice Mayor, if I can add to your questioning on this, since we're on this subject here. On the penalties, I want to make sure I understand. Are we talking about a minimum of two hundred for any loss of tree, and then the additional value of the replacement tree?
Yes.
So if the tree is valued at five hundred, you're looking at seven hundred, five hundred plus the two hundred, or is the two hundred included in that?
So a couple of things. Let me make sure it's clear. The two hundred is the absolute bottom fine if, if something happens. Now we're going to go back and look at the value of that tree. And there's a calculation for that in regards to the, uh, all the different factors, the size of it, um, location, the type of tree, the health of the tree. And that would be the fine that would be, uh, given to that.
So if the tree's valued at five hundred, then it's just a base five hundred total?
Yes.
Not an additional two hundred?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. That was just clarification I needed.
That helps. Thank you.
And very much still in flex here. Um, there's, you know, we're gathering more information, gathering more, uh, facts on the situation. And, um, you know, there's a, there's a hundred different ways to peel the onion. And we just want to make sure we're in a situation where we are, um, deterring anybody from damaging any trees. Um, if they do, we want to make sure that there's ample fines so we can replace it and put it in the right place.
Yeah, the only calculation I'm not seeing on there is the cost of labor to install that new tree and the irrigation for that first year, which is so important for the life of a tree. So both of those probably need to be factored in that as well.
Yeah, we were just talking about that yesterday, um, that, uh, what we do is we plant a tree, and for three years, we water it and take care of it. Um, and that helps the survival rate, increases the percentage of, of the survival rate. Um, the value of the tree is, is one aspect, but you're right in regards to the other items to make sure they get it in the situation. It's not going to do us any good to put a perfectly healthy tree in the ground and not take care of it because it'll end up just dying off.
Can I just follow up on that? I'm sorry. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds. I'm trying to think of a good tree pun, and I can't, so I'll just go with weeds.
Leave it alone.
Yeah, leave it alone. Um, so on page nine, then, when it talks about that, I, I didn't, it talks about repair, remove, replace, did it, but it, did I miss it where it says anything about irrigation? I don't remember seeing anything about irrigation in here.
Not yet. And that's something we probably should flush into this as well.
Flush? Oh, good job. Okay.
Um, and then just to answer, the, the mayor's not here, but to answer the mayor's question, um, we do not have any harsher penalties for a heritage tree at this time. And him pointing that out is great, something that we need to look into.
So if I could...
But if we're looking, I'm sorry, but if we're looking at heritage tree, uh, that's going to be a really big tree. It's going to be, uh, probably a very substantial species. Uh, it, it'll probably carry a pretty big penalty when you do the calculations.
You can only spade so large mature. You can't replace heritage trees very easily.
No.
So following this conversation, um, real-life example, I can't remember if you were in that meeting, Troy, but a couple of years ago, a business damaged four trees next to Kellogg. And I don't know if they're still alive, but how would that process be with this policy? What, what would the fine be? What would the action be?
So I, if I remember right, they were asking in regards to a, um, uh, a removal of those trees. I think it was, are, are we talking about the billboard sign?
Yeah, but it was four because they trimmed them on their own, and they damaged the trees.
Oh, that's...
It was four of trees. So is it?
That's right. Okay.
Would it be per tree or?
Yes. Yes, most definitely. Now I, I remember exactly which situation you're talking about. Um, they, they murdered those trees with the, the intention of trimming them back. And, um, yeah, if they, those trees did not fare well after that. So yes, there would be, uh, that, that to me was malicious damage, and they would have been, um, cited for each tree. Yes.
One other thing I wanted to add on page nine, just a thought for me, um, not that I don't trust you, Troy, but if, could we add that also an elected is a part of that variance, just because we get tagged and all of that stuff, and we hear from people? And even if it's just a notification from you that, hey, this, this tree is up, and I'm thinking about approving or denying, just a connection with the elected in that district?
Yeah, we could definitely do that. I think that, that even bodes even more transparency, and we're all for that. So, um, we can actually probably do something in, uh, in our website as well. So, yeah. Councilmember Bluebaugh, you've been wanting to ask a question.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, I'm just trying to get, make sure I have a good understanding. Is this public land only? Is this private? Is it ever, everything in the city? Help me understand the scope.
Uh, it, it's for the public property that we maintain and operate.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify.
So, so not anything that happens at your house or at Bob's house?
Or somebody doing a development, or somebody renovating a property. It's, it's just for the public.
Now, now there is interest, and there is, um, uh, folks that want to see something happen a little bit more in regards to work with development. Um, how can we increase their participation in protecting trees and adding trees? Um, are, are there ways that we can do that in a public setting? I mean, sorry, in a private setting as well? Having folks being incentivized or finding other ways to encourage people to plant trees? So...
And, and I, before we go there with the regulation, I'd like to, um, kind of do a survey and see what's working because most of these new additions have an HOA that requires so many plantings and so many of this. But anything we can do to foster that behavior, absolutely.
Most definitely. I think what was the intent of this policy is really, uh, we want to be, um, uh, the folks that are, are, what's the word I'm looking for? That, that we are, we're leading the way, that, that we're actually, yes, thank you. That we are the example of, of good stewards of trees, that we are, um, trying to make, make a difference. And with that, we want to make sure everybody kind of follows that interest as well, and maybe takes heed and interest and, and picks up the same intent as well.
Whenever you look back at slide five, and you talk about how we got here, it kind of focuses on, well, other cities are doing this, other cities are doing that. But I assume you've had an issue here, or we wouldn't be addressing it. We're not just doing it because somebody else is doing it.
No, we've definitely had some really big issues as of late. Um, uh, the water treatment plant, uh, they were taking out a water line, and because of that, we're taking out a large hackberry tree that's been there for a long time. Um, uh, I think part of that is a lot of misinformation. Um, we didn't get the opportunity to really get the, uh, the word out. Another situation that has, has occurred was over at Botanica, where we put in a new parking lot. And, uh, a lot of those trees were at the end of their life cycle, uh, as they were putting in the parking lot. And, uh, part of the design was actually putting in new trees as well. Um, it's not necessarily one for one, but there's a lot of situations where we could have been a whole lot more pre, proactive in regards to getting the information out, um, and finding ways to save a tree if we can. Uh, we're not going to be able to save every tree. And if we can't, there should be ways of we can do, uh, a replacement for that size of a tree. Uh, we, we measure it by, uh, diameter at, at breast height. So when we say a forty-inch DBH tree, it's at forty inches at, at breast height. Um, to replace a tree like that with one or two smaller caliber trees, it's not equal. So that's part of this whole situation of what we're looking at in regards to the calculation is how can we replace a tree that we remove with a like-size, um, diameter of, of a tree? And it's not going to be able that we can put a brand-new forty-inch tree in place.
You know, I, I think it's important, and I want to mention it again, my favorite tree is out to Masonic Home out west because you could literally, you know, at Seneca and Douglas, you could see that tree from Clearwater when the cattle trails come up the Chisholm Trail because there were, there were no other trees around here. And that's what they use as their focal point to be able to turn into Wichita.
Um, can, can I get a breakdown of how we're losing the trees? Is it mostly by city removal? Is it by, um, private, you know, private homeowners removing their own trees, or is it developers with big projects going on?
I really can't tell you about the private sector. Um, but what I can tell you about our trees that we, uh, manage and take care of, um, the majority of the trees that we're taking down, there's a backlog in regards to trees removed because they're dead. Um, forestry has been working on taking care of that backlog for a long time, several years, in fact. So the trees that they're taking down are dead trees. Uh, but we do have some trees that are live in, in certain projects and situations, and that's where we want to protect those trees. And so that's part of what this policy is all about. Um, the idea is, um, I, I, I think the situation in regards to dead trees is going to change, but we do have a lot of these trees that are dying of disease, and they're, they're at the end of their life cycle. And we need to catch up in removing them, but also putting in new trees into the ground. And so, uh, any way we can do that, there's a lot of different strategies that we want to look at to make that happen.
So out of the roughly five thousand trees that we lose in any given year, I know that number changes depending on the year and COVID and whatnot, um, would you say half of them are being removed by the city or a quarter of them?
So it's my understanding that that's our removal rate, um, that we're taking down, that those are all city trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is this plan going to help us get ahead of that and narrow the deficit? Are we going to get to a point to where we're actually adding trees to the canopy through this plan?
So two things need to happen. We need to protect the trees that we do have right now and reduce the amount of, uh, trees that are healthy and taking those out. But the other part of it is planting a whole bunch of new trees. And we need to find different resources to make that happen, uh, whether it's donations, whether it's grants, whether it's adding more money to the budget. Uh, one of the things that's an, an issue as well is keeping these trees healthy. Uh, to have healthy trees, you need to have crews to go out there and trim them, um, remove any kind of, um, debris that's inside of them as well because vines grow up on them. Uh, we are, are only able to touch those trees probably once every thirty-five years. Uh, so the cycle in regards to trimming those trees is, is rather large. In most situations, you're looking at a tree trimming cycle of about seven to ten years. So that's another thing that needs to change as well. Um, to have those healthy trees, they need to be maintained, trimmed, and taken care of. And you need to have the staff and the equipment to do that as well.
I will just say from the technical point from the policy, most of the trees, when you are removing a tree, you have to do a certain amount of units. But any new tree that's planted in the policy, the highest that you can get is one unit. So, and that's for a six-inch caliper tree, which most of the time we'll be planting like two and a half-inch calipers. So that will only count about point five. So you, for every two trees, we'll count as one unit. So yes, over the long run, it should increase the canopy significantly.
Okay, yeah, we're getting a little, little deep in the trees here. It's kind of hard to see the forest. Um, we talk about, or I, I read that District Three has the best, the biggest opportunity for planting trees and reforesting the area. Can you just touch on that a bit? Like, is that Plainview Park, which there's not too many trees out there currently, or?
So at, as a city property, we have a lot of park property that's still wide open that can, uh, use plantings. And, and some, one of the things that I want to work with our forestry folks is actually finding a location of an acre and just planting two hundred trees there and put, putting some irrigation there. To make it easier for us to maintain and have a, a quicker impact, um, there's a lot of open spaces that we have. And, and what we want to do is avoid exactly what, uh, Mr. Janz was talking about in regards to places where, uh, there's utilities or there's going to be future growth. It doesn't make any sense to plant trees in those locations if they're ever going to be removed. So, uh, there's plenty of park spaces where we can plant trees.
Okay. Um, the last thing I have is, um, they were talking about, uh, working with people who are, uh, doing development deals in regards to maintaining trees and protecting as many as we can. Is there any way we can maybe just get like a scorecard, especially for development that relies on TIFs and, um, some of our IRBs and whatnot? That way we can at least know that they're trying to look at this, not necessarily the judgment's based on it. But I, it would be nice to have maybe a scorecard or just kind of see a plan as to if they're trying to work with us on this issue.
I, I think that's a great idea that would really kind of, um, put the onus on, on some of the developers to see what they can do to help us out in this situation. So, um, definitely we can look at it and see, see what that would entail. Um, I can't tell you because I'm not in the development world. I don't work with those folks. Um, I'm not sure how all that works. Um, but we can definitely investigate and look at it a little bit more. Thank you.
If I could jump in on there, I, the, the mayor had an idea that we discussed maybe a month ago, where you take a little broader view than just trees, and you look at sustainability initiatives, environmental initiatives. And, uh, for tax abatement, we have a scoring process where you get certain number of points if you're part of the growth plan, a target industry. And so the question is, do you give this to the sustainability, uh, board to take a look at, maybe, you know, a, a recommendation back to the council on adding points to that scoring, uh, for compliance with sustainability initiatives, which would include tree planting? So it's a little broader.
Yeah, sounds good.
So commercial development now has to submit landscape plans as part of their application, and there are a certain amount of requirements already, usually a one and a half to one replacement, if I remember correctly.
Right. And what we're talking about is probably redevelopment projects.
Right, I get that. But to answer Councilmember's earlier question about just scorecard, most of them already have to submit as part of their commercial development application or their process, uh, a landscape plan that would indicate how many they have in it. So, uh, but beyond that, for TIF or other incentive partners, I like that idea of, uh, exploring that. So I think that's merit.
Councilmember Ballard, who's been very patient. Thank you.
Sure. Um, I noticed yesterday you guys planted several trees in Riverside Park, so I'm very excited about that. Thank you for that. Um, okay, so I'm just curious about a couple of things. Um, when you guys take down trees, do they just go to the dump? Or what do, what do you guys do with the trees that you take down?
So there's two things that happen. Um, we try to mulch as many of it as we can. The smaller branches goes through a chipper and turns into mulch, and we use that to replant the trees at their locations. So the mulch is really, really important.
Right.
Um, some of it gets too big that we can't go through that, and that ends up going to, uh, the landfill. Yes.
Okay. I was just curious about the mulch, if that was something that we weren't already doing. Um, and you guys had a lot. Maybe it was something that we could offer, um, to the public. But, okay, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, how many trees is the city budgeting to plant this year?
I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, but if I remember right, twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, we're in twenty twenty-two, so we finished the planting plan. Um, but that was actually twenty-one's money. So what we do is we purchase the, the trees beforehand. And so the, the planting season is from November into April. And we just finished our last trees on Friday last week planting. So typically, right now, I think we've been averaging about fifteen hundred trees planted, roughly. So that's just off the top of my head. Yeah.
Would you mind emailing that to me if you have?
Sure.
We, we had a jump in twenty-two. There, there's more budgeted in twenty-two. I just don't remember the number.
Yeah, we, we, this is number that was in published. Uh, we shared it with the media.
Okay.
We shared it with everybody. It's, it's out there. I just need to find it.
Sure, I can find it, too.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the last, um, well, two more questions. Um, have we looked into grant opportunities to fund, um, projects for public or for private?
That's probably something we can do a little bit more of. Um, we definitely want to start looking at some public-private partnerships. We want to look at using, um, volunteers through the community, uh, and have them help us fundraise as well. Um, but, uh, there really hasn't been a whole lot of grants out there specifically for trees. So we can definitely do some more research on that. Um, yeah, our, our staff is so focused on their day-to-day work that we don't have that chance to look at for those other extra resources. So, um, maybe there might be an assignment for some more fellows in the future. I don't know.
Okay, awesome. And then my last question is, um, I know I have a lot to learn about the franchise fee, but it looks like in the ordinance, there is a portion of the franchise fee that is maybe specifically for trees. And I was just curious, is that a substantial amount? Or like, um, how does that work? And what are you guys able to do with it?
So that money goes back into the operations. So that's part of what's helping us fund our, our day-to-day operations. I can't recall what that is off the top of my head. Uh, Mr. Manning is the person that I would want to call to, uh, discuss that. And I, I think recently, he's actually had that conversation, has actually explained that, uh, a couple of times to some folks. So I can ask him to provide that information to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I had just one, one thing. I know I've talked to you about this before, but on park property, since you were brought back... I know I've talked to you about this before, but on park property, since you brought that up, I love the idea of all those trees. In food desert areas, could we consider like fruit trees, pears or apples, something that produces that we could get out?
So there's a lot of different thoughts on that. And there's some really good ideas behind that, and there's really some big challenges as well. I've seen that program successful, and I've also seen it just really die in flames. What happens is a lot of these fruit trees, it takes a while for that fruit to become a full piece of fruit and actually mature. And a lot of times, the fruit gets picked before it's even ready to be eaten. And so that's always a really big issue. And it depends on the type of fruit as well. Peaches, apricots, and those really soft type of pieces of fruit. If they're not picked at the right time, then it really kind of defeats the purpose. And a lot of times, they're eaten by animals as well and birds. So there's differently, a lot of different ways of maintaining those. And one of the things that we're talking about and looking at is the community gardens. And as we're looking at Edgemore as a location for the community garden, the idea is to plant apple trees along the perimeter of the community garden in an enclosed space. So the gardeners are in there that they're taking care of those fruit trees. And then they can donate those trees to the right locations, or those apples, I should say. When I was in Austin, there was an effort to just plant a bunch of fruit trees in an open area. And next thing you know, they were damaged because people were climbing on them, pulling off the fruit that wasn't ripe yet. Kids were pulling the fruit and throwing it at each other, you know, just on and on and on because they were not being cared for and protected, and there's no resources to do that on a regular basis. But if you put it inside of an enclosed area, it changes the situation pretty drastically because you're in a situation where there's people on a daily basis taking care of that garden, and they can also take care of that fruit as well.
Troy, could I jump in real quick? And Councilmember Johnson, I'd love to have a conversation with you. I strangely know a great deal about this because of the health and wellness collision and food desert issue. It's called gleaning. And there's also a concept of, you know, the city could, instead of planting flowers, we could plant tomatoes and peppers and all different kinds of things. And I know that's a whole different topic, but you made a lot of good points about, and then just making sure the right kinds of trees that can actually thrive in our environment. We're in a more harsh environment, so apple trees are about one of the only examples where you can really have success in that. But there's, there are lots of issues with that as well.
So I was, I was also going to recommend if we do that, and especially in a specific area, maybe we could partner with the Sedge County Extension Office. That way we could educate people on the tree, when to pick. And then because we have that wonderful organization, Nudge Compost, so for the fruit that falls before it gets to be what people complain about, maybe again, at a specific site, they could go pick that up and compost it for gardens like they do now.
So our efforts over at Evergreen, I'm sorry, over at Edgemore is, we're working with 4H, we're working with the county extension, we're working with all these folks to put this together. And this would be a great model to see how that's all going to work with a large enough space that's going to have plant beds in there for all the fruits, I'm sorry, for all the vegetables. But on the edge, it's a screen and also helps protect everything inside and provide shade is those apple trees. And I think we have a group that's going to donate those apple trees.
Further questions? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. Back on slide 11, or I guess go forward here. Yeah, one more, go back one more. That's what I meant. I've seen this happen in residential where people plant trees too close to buildings and then they get, you know, too tight. So well, that, when it says drawn to scale using the tree survey, will be that at current size or full maturity? I think it probably needs to be at full maturity so that you don't have overcrowding.
So most of the times, I always laugh at the plans that go in. And when you start looking at renderings, the architects put out this really cool rendering, and you see the trees that are fully grown and you people walk, see people walking on the sidewalks and the grass is super, super green. That's not what it looks like the first day you open up a building or whatnot because you're planting something that's really, really small. So the designers, engineers, they typically plan for all that. And so those are usually pulled away from, from the building. They're spaced enough so that when they plant them, they don't look like they're at the right size. But once they become full size, they become.
Just want to make sure that we're doing it for maturity.
And I will say in the maintenance and planning section, we lay out exactly if you're doing it on a right-of-way to avoid like sign obscurity and all that. We have specific regulations or best practices for that, to make sure that doesn't get in the way of signage and things like that.
Troy, point of clarification, certainly we've lost a lot of trees because they died. But we also have some invasive trees that cause big problems, like red cedars. That those are basically tinderboxes, and if we don't take care of them, they could destroy a lot more than just the tree. So that's part of our challenge also, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. A lot of our open spaces, Ponton Prairie Park is one of those locations where we've removed several hundred of those cedars. And as part of the fire mitigation that we do as well, we've done grass burnings to try to burn the grass, and at the same time, we, we take out those trees as well because they're just matches.
Just going forward on the slides, I agree with the mayor, the project budget paying into a tree bank. I like that idea because again, like the example that Gary showed, that was a very tough situation there because we lost some trees and we just couldn't put them right back where they were. So we talked about the penalties. On the heritage tree program, the process seems odd to me because it says that to receive the status, the tree must fall into the category, and then it's listed. And then the park director is the one that allows the removal. But then on the next slide, it talks about applications reviewed by the park board and that they will determine if it's a heritage tree. So who's determining if it's a heritage tree? Is it just if it meets the qualification and you decide, or does it have to go to the park board? Or is the variance goes from you to the park board?
So let's take a step back. So we'll talk about applications first. The application will go through a process, and I'll review them and I'll take them to the park board for them to decide whether it's going to be a heritage tree or not.
Okay.
So if it's going to be removed, then there's an application for that or some kind of request that we, that we'll look at it. And that will come through my office, and I'll take a look at that.
Well, then it go to the park board as well as having, like Councilmember Johnson said, a council member input?
Sounds like for right now, it does not, yeah. And it could. It's not that difficult to take one more step and take it to the park.
Yeah, again, going back to that transparency issue that we talked about. I think that's important, that it does come back to not only to the council member, but then also to the park board.
Yep.
All right, that's all I had, thank you.
So can a heritage tree be on private property or is it asked to be on public property?
Well, we're definitely going to be looking at the ones on public property. It can be a private one, and we can definitely include them and recognize them as such.
So if Councilmember Johnson was my neighbor and I wanted to mess with him a little bit, and I started the process to make the tree in his front yard a heritage tree, how would that play out?
So because it's private property at this time, it would not include. But many other cities who do have it for private property require the homeowner to actually sign off on it. So if you had it just to mess with him, he, it would, nothing would happen until he signed off and said, that's okay.
Okay.
So, okay, to the mayor's point, if a tree was deemed a heritage tree on private property, and not just used, maybe my property, and it was a heritage tree, went through all that process, whether I signed off or not, and one day I wanted to cut it down, am I penalized for cutting down a tree on my property?
So that's private property. This policy is not going to apply to that whatsoever. The only reason why I would say that to entertain the idea of it being a heritage tree is just to recognize it as a heritage tree. We don't have the authority to remove it or do any trimming on it or anything. But it was just, you know, the idea of saying, hey, you know what? I have a heritage tree in my front yard. Here's where it is, here's what it looks like. I got this nice little piece of paper that, you know, recognizes it as a heritage tree.
Will it be listed on city like website?
I think we can do that as a separate category. Here's the trees on public land, here the trees on private land.
I think that's good because if we run into that situation where a heritage, like somebody, let's say, maybe I buy a house that had a heritage tree listed, that person's moved, I don't like it, and I cut it down, and then the city gets blamed for it because people have found this heritage tree. I think a separate list showing this was private property so they could do what they want.
And it would add value to the home. You can, as a selling point, have these two heritage trees on our private property. Have this piece of paper that recognizes it. That's pretty cool.
But there also should maybe be a process for that homeowner that doesn't, that now purchases that property, that doesn't want it to be a heritage tree anymore. Could they opt out? Right, is there a process for that?
Jumping deep into the roots today.
Man, you're branching into some uncharted territory. You're really going out on a limb.
It's getting late. So the, and it just, as you expand the policy or potential policy, if it goes into private residence, then I think that might be some questions to consider. Just going to throw out roughly a bit of an unintended consequence that my understanding is happening in Austin. And I'm glad this policy isn't designating trees based on their circumference. But my brother is a developer with, or he's vice president of construction for Habitat for Humanity and discussed the tree policy there where if it's 15 inches in circumference, it's protected. We have to go through a additional process. So what it does is it causes everyone to chop down their trees at 13 inches so that they don't have to deal with that headache down, down the road. It actually had the unintended consequence of the reverse effect. So I like where we're going with this policy where it seems that that's not the strict route we're taking. But also just wanted to put that out there as we continue this discussion, that there are some cities that have had some unintended consequences from policy that act at the reverse effect of what the intention was. So I don't know if, in your policy discussions, if you have discovered other unintended consequences that we could hopefully avoid as we progress.
I don't think we'll ever find the exact perfect policy, but I think anything we do to protect trees and encourage people to plant trees is where we need to go. I think we have a lot more work to do, and we will be meeting with some other folks as well, other stakeholders. And if Bob directs us, we'll be willing to come back again and give you updates if needed.
With the mayor bringing up the diameter, I hope we can exempt cottonwood trees from this. Because I think the bigger they get, the more of a hazard.
There are cottonwoods ones. They're definitely difficult, but they're a very valuable tree as they store a lot of carbon.
Yep. All right, let's go ahead and leave the discussion there.
Tried that five minutes ago, but thanks.
Just wanted to say I appreciate Councilmember Bluebog for laughing. So Mr. Manager, next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you. The next item has to do with our economic development guidelines. Discussion that started at the bench a few weeks ago regarding a provision that was originally brought to us by county staff for changes on TIF language. And so I'm going to turn this over to Kathy Sexton to go over the language that was proposed and to get guidance from you in that regard.
Thank you, Bob. Kathy Sexton, your interim assistant city manager. Just brief review, I know the time is of the essence today. We just do want to share the history with you and, and jump into kind of where we're at now. So the policy was developed in October 2020, and it was to bring all the various programs under one policy document. There was a lot of input from a lot of different groups at that time, and speculative buildings were added at that time. Then, in just a few months ago, in December, after using that policy for about a year and a half or so, the city figured out, okay, we need to make some updates as far as making very clear that the applicants need to pay some administrative fees and ensure whatever vetting is required by outside agencies that we contract with, that they would pay for those fees as well. So a pretty minor change, but obviously important to make clear that there are fees upfront to get the city to review the proposals. Also in December, there were a few technical changes made. Just after using a document of that size for a year, you just find words that need updated and pretty much just technical items were done at that time. And then we brought up and were talking through for several months this idea of airfield hangars or MRO, maintenance, repair, and operations kind of buildings for big, huge airplanes typically. So after that was talked about, you know, I'm one of those people, I read the front. And I went, hey, this says it's a joint thing with the county. So that's when we called, I called the county staff, our counterparts, and reviewed with them those technical amendments that we made in December as just a review with them so they knew what was going on. And they, of course, agreed with the airfield hanger stuff and had been in on some of that conversation. The other technical things that we put into that document for your approval on April 12th were just, you could see listed here on specific pages in the document. You have made the page numbers, and the one handout that we put here is not as approved on the 12th. This is the actual document that was put online for the April 12th agenda, the one that had the error in it. I wanted to make sure we were all working from the same document. But you can see these pages, we updated some titles, some staff turnover, contact information on page 20, some duplicate language. Obviously, on page 43 was the TIF language that was errantly put out there. So this slide just shows you, the first bullet in black, just shows you the actual language of the policy and what it is. The underlining was added for the purpose of this slide just to note that when we sent their airfield hanger policy over and the December changes to the county, the county staff came back and said, hey, you know, while we're at it, we really ought to clarify this TIF language. And here's an idea. And it's, the idea is the second bullet on this slide in basically red is what they were saying to add and strike through what they're saying to delete. And I would say county, I'm not talking about the county commission. There's no indication to me that this was approved or reviewed by anybody. It was just a staff person literally saying to me, this is a suggestion for a starting point for discussion. Just here's an idea. And his intent, I believe, was really clarification. We've used the policy for about a year. These are the words that underlined in the first bullet. These are the words that kind of come up for people to kind of say, what do you mean by this? And what kind of document am I supposed to have? And how do I prove a negative? How do I prove something happened or didn't happen? And some of that is how, but some of it's also like, these are private businesses. And if you get rejected by a bank, do you really want to make that a public document? So, so it's just difficult. And so I think the folks, the city and county staff who worked on this over the years just were trying to clarify things when we started talking about that. And so, so the concern there, some of the concerns of the words used in the current policy were to clarify and to hopefully use words that were better understood by developers as well as the public, as well as the staff in terms of trying to show why the public's support or incentive or subsidy, however you want to say that, is important and valuable to the project itself. So it's not about talking about, well, who's the developer and do they have a lot of money? It was more about what is the project? How does the math work? Show us the math that indicates that the project was needing subsidy or would not happen. In other words, could not get the investors, could not get the bankers to approve the loans, et cetera, because the return was not projected to be as much. So that was the intent. And obviously, as you all know, we didn't realize that, you know, we made a mistake in getting that online. So there was really no big discussion about this. It was a proposal for an initial conversation that we were like, you know, the airfield hanger is the most important thing. We need to move on this. We don't, we can't be getting into big conversations about TIF language. But, so you know, the current practice is that we certainly identify the impediments. What makes either the site or the project being proposed eligible for the policy of the tax increment financing district? How do we compare the return on investment of that proposed project with public incentives and without public incentives? And comparing that math helps us figure out what is worthy of your consideration at the city council level. So we are open for any conversation you all want to have, if that helps explain, you know, what brought all this to the point we're at now? Or if you want to give us advice or ideas about going forward, we are all ears.
Yeah, I'll start off. So there's 11 pages of amendments in this document. On the 12th, I think we focused on two pages.
I think we focused on two pages that were supposedly only amended. The public got this document with 11 pages of amendments. Now, your presentation states that the language cleanup on page 19 through 20, which is what I believe was passed in its entirety because it had the airfield hanger, the duplication of language that states must begin construction 120 days of council approval and complete construction within 15 months of council approval, that struck here three times. Was that part of the amendment that passed?
Yes, the duplicative language, yes.
So, so where is there encompassing language that says, that applies to this entire document? Because it's in three different areas, but each area also has a minimum lease square foot. Like there-
Yes.
They're under different subjects here. So office building must be constructed within 120 days. Industrial building must be, must begin construction within 120 days. Flex facility must begin construction within 120 days. These are substantial changes. So is there, to take that requirement out, is there another place in this document where that 120 days is just applies to everything? And if so, what page is that?
Yeah, it's page 20 at the very bottom. It's the timeframe, section F. So what you have here is a section nine that begins at the top of page 19, and then you have A, B, C, D, E, F under it. And some of those are specific types of buildings, like speculative, industrial, flex facility, office, airfield hanger. And then you have some things that apply to both. So that's the timeframe piece, and that applies to all of those.
So the timeframe piece will apply to everything?
Yes, because it's the exact same wordage, wording repeated four or five times. So it was already in there in section F timeframe, and it is applicable to the entire section nine.
Okay. What about page 21?
Yes. Over there. Yes. You've got the second part of section F on timeframe, and then you've got the IRB section.
Was this also a part of the, the airfield hanger amendment that passed was on page 21 as well, which made changes to-
Yes.
Or supply chain regulatory requirement? And then there's some, what appears to be just technical cleanup language?
Exactly. And Mayor, I should have said earlier in my presentation, I failed to do so, that anytime you get into a policy, you know, you don't address policy changes very often. So whenever you have a substantive change, obviously is when we bring to the city council. During those times, and when we also like to clean up any mistakes or errors in language, kind of the whole, think about, everything used to be written in older policies as he, for example, he and him. And then years ago, we started saying he slash she, or his or her. You know, it was a his or her. And then we get to where newer language, we change it to they. So it's just those kinds of grammatical and word preferences that change over the decades. And so that's all I was trying to do when I went through and made a few of the technical cleanup. We look at those and go, well, none of these are substantive. They're just trying to keep making the policy more clear and sort of clean up duplications or anything that makes it sort of bureaucratic or hard to understand. That was my intent.
And my previous job has taught me a bit about technical amendments. I mean, you change the word utilize, the word use. That obviously-
Yes.
I think if you change the word made or the word child, then that actually does change the intent.
Absolutely.
Utilize, the word use doesn't. However, there is the addition, or if supply chains or regulatory requirements dictate otherwise. So the full sentence, exceptions may be made to the requirement of the completion date if multiple buildings are projected and then added, or if supply chains or regulatory requirements, e.g. FAA dictate otherwise.
Yes. We pointed that out in the staff report, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it is. It was trying to update the policy from the perspective of, you know, 120 days is one thing, but if you order steel and it takes a year and a half to get steel, then do you want to penalize a developer for that? You know, those kinds of things. Now, the FAA part, very good point, is because this new piece of the policy on airfield hangars does give us some opportunities to develop businesses at Eisenhower National or at Jabbera Airport. So when we have those situations, you know, we can't dictate how long the FAA takes to approve something. And if they're busy with other things, they may take longer than our 120 days. So we did not want to penalize a developer because they're waiting on a federal agency to make some review, if that makes sense.
It does. And this is under the section timeframe.
Yes.
And it's the exception to the timeframe, of course. Do we have a way of determining outside FAA if the supply chains or regulatory requirements, or particularly supply chain, if there's an issue with that? Or is it just, because that is a substantial change. And so do we have a process to determine what constitutes supply chain? Or is it just someone can say, hey, I'm having issues ordering the particular brand I want, and thus now I need 300 in days instead of 120?
It's a great question, and we fully recognize that's something we'll have to figure out as we go along a little bit. We haven't had to deal with that before, but in this post-pandemic time, I guess if we could say that, or pandemic time, that there are different supply chain problems for different things, and they come and go. So yes, we would definitely be looking for evidence of that issue from any developer that asked for a, an extension.
Okay, but that change was made on the 12th. Now, page, I believe, 43.
Mm-hmm.
It's significant change when it comes to TIFs. And this is, I think, the cause of some of the public discussion. So this document, when it was released to the public, had this change to section project requirements under A, tax increment financing. I believe you just showed that.
Mm-hmm.
So when we voted on the entire document on the 12th, and all the changes within, not just on, on the hangars, this was, according to the public, they thought we were making this change, and you can confirm that this was not changed. That our, what we actually, whatever was passed into the clerk, this part, although it shows would have been changed, was not actually changed.
Correct. That was discussed in the council meeting, reflected in the minutes, and we're not making that edit in the final document as we go forward.
So what is this, then? Just notes that someone put on for potentially future changes? Or, because so far, all the red line in this document has been changed, my understanding or accepted, at one time or another, except for this particular one. But it's not in a, there's nothing to, there's no footnote next, there's nothing to suggest that this hasn't been changed, but the other 11 pages have, or 10 pages, not including this one. So what, is this just a brainstorm, like rough draft? Is this supposed to come back to us? What, how do I, how do I talk about this?
Yeah, I hear you. It's, yeah, it was kind of funny preparing for this event today because what I did was I just took the actual document that was errantly put online for the 12th document. I just thought, I don't want to accept the changes that the council approved, because then it'd be harder to find them if you were flipping through, trying to find. So I just left all the red line in there. But certainly, that piece on page 43 was not approved by the council on the 12th and is not being updated or really even suggested by the staff that it be considered for updating. I mean, if you want us to look at updating or changing or just drop the whole thing, I mean, we're open to whatever you would like us to proceed with. I know the county, it's not something the county's, you know, really hot to trot on either. I think it was one staff person just trying to say, why don't we clarify these words to kind of clear up some of the confusion and the angst caused by this particular section.
Okay. With the part, I think in your first slide about removing background checks, what was the thinking behind that? Is there-
So, yeah, absolutely.
Because your discussion about it was mostly about fees. Are we still doing back, is that another part of the document, or have we just kind of walked away from background checks?
Yeah, this was just my first summary slide, and it was just trying to indicate that the changes made in December last year, so a few months ago, were, were the new language for, it wasn't eliminating background checks, it was trying to make sure that the developers were being told upfront that they had to pay all the fees associated with the vetting and the backgrounds. I think it just hadn't been in there real clearly before. And so we put administrative fee 250, and of course, the key there is in the first line, and external vendor vetting fees, because those fees change, and it just depends on what the situation is at the time. So whatever those third-party fees are, the city, you know, our budget doesn't need to be covered in that. The developer gives us checks in advance for those items before we even process the applications.
But the amendments to this section aren't about fees. That part is clear. Developer will pay $250 city administration fee. I think that's, looks like italicized, so it's added. But the striking of the language concerning background checks means that also the city will conduct a background check on all TIF applicants and applicants, project partners. That line struck and has nothing to do with fees. Therefore, my question is, did that, that pass in December 14, 2021? I don't think there was any discussion, I recall, about that. And what, what's the thinking there?
Yeah. Mayor, I'll go ahead and answer that question. Oh, Bob?
Well, I'll mark, supplement whatever I say, okay? When this was brought forward, first of all, it did strike a background check, but it added vendor vetting fee up at the top. So that's what we're doing. The council has a requirement that we vet all the parties before they get economic development assistance. So we did not take away, we just don't call it background check, we call it a vetting. And what happened here, if you remember, we had a project that had some publicity regarding a developer who had multiple corporations, including some LLCs. And so we incurred significantly more expense trying to track down references or vetting that person through all of their corporations. And so this language allows us to take that, the total cost for that vetting and to recover those costs from the developer. That was what was intended when this was introduced. Mark, is there anything you want to add to that?
It also clarified that it was actually taking that responsibility from city staff to conduct that, to hiring the third-party company for that as well. So it was under the purview of when we brought forth the agreement with Trivio to conduct that vetting, but we wanted to update the guidelines at the same time to indicate to the developers that it would now be going to that third party, and these would be the costs associated with that.
That was a process improvement that we had brought to you after we had concerns about the vetting just being at the staff level. We wanted to bring in new expertise, additional expertise on vetting a developer.
And I guess that is why this part, I think, is worrisome, is the fact that we can't depend on the media or others to do all our background checks for us. So is the discussion then, vetting is synonymous with background checks? Or is vetting, because to vet a project is different than doing a background check. Usually vetting, to me, means you have the resources to go forward versus what was your past conduct. Background check is very specific to more of a past conduct and record of success. To vet someone, to me, means to vet more of a current situation than a past situation. However, from this discussion, again, is it reasonable to believe that by saying vetting, you also mean background check? And if the city's not conducting it, then that would be a third party conducting it. Is that a proper interpretation of this discussion?
I don't want to misspeak in terms of what's included in our process, but vetting has always gone back to look at the financial performance of the developer and other projects previously, as well as back taxes or tax obligations, tax liens, and other liens that have been attached to the developer's prior projects. I don't know that we would do a police background check on any developer. I don't know that we've ever done that. This has always been based on their financial performance, and that includes taxation.
So the, so in the past, when we did background checks, do they also come up with police reports? Or they equivalent to vetting?
No, I don't believe we've ever had police reports.
So someone's convicted of fraud or something in the back, background, we've never been able to catch that? Or does that fall under the financial vetting?
Right. So they do a check within the court for criminal court cases. So they don't find, you know, they only find the records of conviction, but we don't do them to look and see how many times they've been charged for something. But if there's been, you know, a case that's been, you know, conviction or closed, and I'd have to refer to Jennifer, there's a specific terminology, but that's what it's looking for, is if it's actually been, you know, a determination by the courts. Again, so that's the records that they, they do still find, and that's what we looked for in the past.
So before this change in December of last year, just a few months ago, the background check did actually do more of a criminal investigation as well. And now, are we to believe that change in the word from background check to vetting is going to produce the same type of report that the background check language resulted in the past?
That's the intent, is now we have a third party, that's their sole responsibility. And we, we did do some samples with them to verify the records they find are very closely matched what we've already looked for. And in most cases, they actually found a few additional records that we, databases that we didn't currently search. So we found that it matched the process that was currently constructed by the city. And that's why we felt that using this third party would address that situation.
So it says city administration fee for external vendor vetting fee. Okay. So regardless of what the third party costs, it's only 250 to us?
Right. So whatever it costs us to do the vetting, we get that fee from, and then we get the check from the applicant to pay that so that the city is not out any money.
So is it 250, or is it the cost of the vetting?
And, $250 city administrative fee and whatever it costs us to have the third party do the-
Thank you.
-the work. Yes, great question. Thank you very much.
Perfect. So this document is accurate up until the TIF part. Is that reasonable to assume?
Yes, that's the only part there on page 43 that we made the error on. And again, I should have apologized for that. Again, in my presentation, I failed to do that. We are very sorry for bringing this up out of the order in which it should have been brought up.
Further discussion?
I just had two things. I like the TIF language as it is. And just another reminder, I've said it to former assistant city manager Scott Rigby, I want to change the boundaries on the redevelopment area for District One. I would love to see that boundary around 21st Street actually go to Hillside and up to 27th Street and take in that left-out area. So I think that area has a lot of opportunities for building homes and development. There's a lot of homes that are not city homes that are boarded up, and just love to see that expanded. And I know that the last time I brought this up, again, not what we were talking about today, but since it's, since we're talking about this policy, there's not a huge dollar amount consistent. But as we look at getting affordable housing in these areas, just the property tax freeze, so that new homeowners will pay whatever would be paid now, even though there's improvements to the property for three or four years, or maybe scale it up over some time. It may only be a hundred or $150 benefit to them, but I think that's enough and warrants maybe that. It won't hurt the city, county, or school district if we freeze it. It would hurt if we eliminate it. But if we froze it, that gives them a little time before their property taxes increase from the redevelopment of the house. And that, just for discussion purposes, because I don't know what that looks like. I know we had a program some years ago, but I would like to revisit that at some point to see what that benefit could be in these areas.
That's a conversation the city manager, what I've been having with a total of the core area, kind of within 235 areas, several different pockets there. So be glad to keep having that conversation.
Councilman, you said at the beginning-
Councilman, you said at the beginning of your statement, you like the TIF language as is. Are you talking about the current one? Or the proposed one?
The current one, the proposed one I get, but I just know that other taxpayers really want to see final effort, and everything's been exhausted.
Absolutely. And from my understanding, the one right there is not even being proposed. Is that accurate? That this is just
Discussion.
thrown in there? It's not even being proposed at this time?
No, sir, not by us.
And that's the good source of some of the confusion of the feedback I've gotten as well. Also, is there a language that we could adapt to ensure that if we're doing business with an LLC or a sole proprietor, that the names of the folks who are within that are also public? My understanding, it's only about 5%. If you're a 5% owner, then it's public, but then we have places that everyone has just a little less than 5%, and therefore, the public really doesn't know who we're doing business with. And it makes me wonder about the background check and the vetting. If we don't have that type of transparency, are we giving, are we giving the public an opportunity to give us feedback, or even the media an opportunity to do what they do when it comes to bringing to our attention issues that might not be brought to our attention if they didn't have the information to go off of?
I wrote that down, Mayor. It's not something we've really looked at before. I think we've modeled the policy after others at 5%, but we could look at it and see if that's, if we could find such language or what others are doing.
I was going to add, Mark, is it 5%? Is that the cutoff?
Yes, 5% is what we looked at, and I believe back when we looked at that, it had to do with kind of like the control that they have at that point. But it's still something we can explore.
Sure. Council desire, because we run the names of all the other principles. To add other principles, we could do that, if that's what the council wants.
Yeah, I just think it's worth, we're talking about as we move forward. You know, and I mean no offense, for example, the Wind Surge, I think there's only one owner of multiple who owns 5%. So I've had folks reach out and ask, well, who are the rest of the folks we're doing business with? And the reality is, well, no one knows, because I think Lou was the, possibly his wife, were the people who own more than 5%, so they were the face of it. But you got another 95% of ownership that we don't know who those folks are. Which, again, that's under the old policy, I'm not knocking it, I'm just saying, moving forward, I think that for transparency and also hopefully for not engaging in business with folks who are less reputable. So that was one I wanted to look at. Also, do we have, or can we look at policy changes that would allow, or that would almost require if an LLC is getting, doing business with the city, owes us money, but then the LLC files bankruptcy, where we would have a personal or some type of backing so that we don't get stuck holding on to debt by having an LLC just fold, and then?
Our current, Mayor, our current policy requires a personal guarantee or letter of credit or some kind of security for the city when we do business with the LLC. That was not the case in earlier days, and we've seen a few defaults as a result of that.
Okay, so I just want to, and it was the early day defaults is one I'm more concerned about, because I think we're still paying for some of that, or will be. Councilmember Ballard?
Yeah, is there a policy that shows if a business owes the city money, that maybe they will not eligible to apply for any type of assistance?
Councilmember, no, there isn't. We, the council policy is if you, if they owe taxes, then, yes, then we report that as part of the vetting process. But if other fees or other financial obligations are owed, the policy is silent to what we would do.
Okay, is that something that we can look into if they owe the city money for whatever it is that they're not eligible to apply for?
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that law, we'll have to review that to make sure that we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. I think that we wind up, and sometimes get into situations where a company owes us money and it uses leverage. And can we make sure that we don't find ourselves in those situations moving forward?
I assume the policy would be owners of the corporation, because in many cases, we have LLCs and they only have one project.
Thank you.
One last note, I forgot, I'm sorry. Boundary wise, I also forgot to move the boundary that goes down Vesta on 13th, just to Oliver. So that corner taken in that section.
So that we don't design districts from the bench, I would, we'll have to take a look at the new census data, right? Will help us determine what we do for the redevelopment boundaries.
And that might be a more global way to address, I think, the council member's concern, is can we have the new census data, a rework of the maps to see if any changes need to be had?
Right, I think what we're going to try to do is see if the redevelopment boundary could coincide with the ECA boundary, which council has already approved. And that's what council member Bluebaugh's talked about before.
I have a question for staff. If I remember, something the mayor brought up, the agreement with Wichita Baseball, aka Wind Surge, we had to identify the majority owner of that before the process could go further. And that majority owner being 50% was Lou Schweckheimer, if I remember correctly. Is that not accurate?
That sounds correct, but I'd have to look back to
Could you restate your statement?
He made a comment that Lou Schweckheimer had only 5% ownership, if I remember, is that what you said?
So Lou, from my understanding, incorrect me, because I wasn't here during these discussions, and I know you were, so correct me, that out of all the owners of Wind Surge, and I'm just using them as an example, the only person who owned more than 5% and thus was named was Lou. And, which means that the rest of the 95% are owned by folks who we really don't know at the time. Of course, Jordan stepped forward after Lou's passing. And that also, as we do a deeper dive into this type of policy, the fact that Lou passed away, we, the city was doing business with Lou as the person named. In the future, if someone was to similar situation, what if someone stepped forward who had a background or something that really wouldn't, that we wouldn't have done business with to begin with? And we didn't, we wouldn't know that.
I understand what you're saying, but I remember that at the time we did the agreement, we had to identify the majority partner, which would be 50%, which is, at that time, was Mr. Schweckheimer.
Correct, so it was, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because he was over 5%.
Over 50, he was at 50%.
He was at 50, but the policy was over 5%.
Over 5.
Anyone who owed 5% or more. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all we have.
Is there further discussion on policy, or perhaps when we look at some of the items that were brought up? Maybe in a future discussion, we could continue to evolve these guidelines? Any other discussion?
Well, I think it's going to be difficult to determine final effort. As the slide pointed out, that's going to be hard to figure out. And how do you, how do you ensure that that final effort has been made? What is that process?
Well, we've, this has been evolving, right? And so we're to the point now where we are showing return on investment and what sufficient return should be for a project. And that's what we've started reporting to the council. My guess is if at another point you decide to go a little further than that, under this policy, then the council would give us that guidance as well.
And I appreciate seeing that ROI, that's, it is a new exercise in these deals, and it does show that gap, which can be pretty significant, so.
Is there anything in the policy that if contractually the policy was changed, where we essentially vote as part of that vote, that we waived part of the policy, that, I think we've done that in the past, is there any way that we have a process put in place that would have that stick out? That would be more transparent? Do you know what I mean by that? So let's say we're waiving, there is a reason to waive, I don't know, the
Mayor, I think I can address it. Because I totally hear what you're saying, because essentially, you all hire staff, and we enforce the policies, that's our job. And so if we see something that's, oh, well, this is different from the policy, we try to point that out in the staff report on your agenda, okay? So it says, this, according to the policy, they asked for this, but they're only eligible for this. So that way, council can see, hey, if you want to give them what they asked for, you're going to have to waive policy. You have to make an exception to the policy. And if staff sees a reason to make an exception, it feels like we had one on IRB a few weeks ago, there was an exception to the policy. And I know, it was because the particular business, it was pandemic, he didn't know we changed our policy, and he applied like a month later than he should have applied, according to the new policy. We, the staff said, technically, this doesn't meet policy, but
And we have another one on facade improvements where there was confusion as well, and the council will have to approve that waiver if, when it comes to you in order for that person to get a facade approval for the facade project. I don't know that we have any waivers in this policy that can be done simply at the staff level. I don't believe there is.
I think it's our job to point those out and say, this doesn't meet the policy, so, or the guidelines.
Right.
I mean, you can totally waive it, because they're guidelines, I mean, it's up to you, it's not up to staff.
Most of the time, we'll point that out to the developer, and that'll, they won't go forward.
And to take that a step further, I'd love to know if we're utilizing, and sure, definitely pointing that out during the public meeting and making that clear with a slide is probably the way to go. But also, if we're using an economic development tool for the first time in a particular way, if we're paying for something with a tip that we normally don't pay for, or anything that could be, I guess, seen as a variation for the norm, can we, instead of bearing it in a report, make sure that there is the practice, if it's not written down, the practice that that will be almost highlighted, that will be brought up, so that folks will know?
Mayor, we've done that in the past, and we'll continue to do that. I can think of the eligibility for land being part of TIF, and it's allowed by state law. Our policy didn't allow it, we brought it to council when a developer asked to have it included. And we'll continue to follow that practice.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all we have, thank you.
All right, anything else with the other group?
I'd just like to say I agree with council member Johnson about the current language of the TIF. That's preferable to me than the alternate being discussed.
100%. All right, well, if we're finished, then there's no objection, we can adjourn. See you none. Thank you all, everyone.